Well, good evening, colleagues.
Good evening.
Let's start our CIP, Capital Improvement Budget and Fab Finance Audit and Budget Committee Meeting. I explicitly spelled each of those out because when I was a new board member, no one told me what CIP Fab meant. And I had to pretend for like weeks that I knew what was going on, but I spelled it out as a way to welcome our two new board members, Ms. Grady and Ms. Hernandez. Welcome to your very first CIP Fab Committee Meeting, very first official board meeting.
(applause).
Yeah, it was the least we could do. Oh, no, it wasn't for you.
You should have known it wasn't.
It wasn't.
Dr. Eubanks, while you were looking this way, he's waving as he walks in here to the applause.
And, of course, Sonia Williams is in here. I'll congratulate her when she comes, but an official congratulations also to Ms. Boston on your reelection. Welcome back to the madhouse. All right, Ms. Berkeley, could you call the role for us?
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members. Dr. Anderson, Mr. Burrows, Ms. Epps, Ms. Eubanks, Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Here.
Dr. Kaufman, Ms. Monday, Ms. Quinteros-Grady.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Ms. Williams. Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Ms. Boston. Dr. Eubanks.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, the agenda is before you for tonight's meeting. Do we have any questions about the agenda before we get started? All right, there's no public speakers for tonight, so we'll go right into our discussion items. We have, generally speaking, when CIP Fab is first introduced, we have a big presentation about the CIP Fab budget and the CIP Fab program. If my new board members want to take a quick look at it, you could just take a flip through the pages in that very small 12-inch binder right behind you, and you'll see the CIP Fab. But we'll go into more detail. For now, we don't have any Fab discussion items, but we do have some CIP discussion items that the administration will present to us today, answer any questions, and we're basically kind of teeing these up for agenda items that would come before us at our next official meeting as, what do you call it? Not consensus items, what's it called? Consent, consent, consensus. I'm new at this. Not. All right, so at that, I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell and the administration for an overview of CIP Discussion Items 3.1 through 3.5. Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks, members of the board. I would also, following up on your, if you want to look at the binder over there, whether you are brand-new to the board or returning to the board or continuing with the board or whatever that status may be, as always, we're happy also to set up some time to review, process, answer questions or anything before, during, or after any of these meetings. So just let us know if there are questions that you have, any of you. So there are a number of items before you tonight. Final acceptance and payment for the roof placement project at Tayac Elementary School, additional service requests, additional soil sampling for the Fairmont Heights High School replacement project, additional service requests, and increase in scope of work for architect and engineering services for the Fairmont Heights High School replacement, the final acceptance and approval for the William Worth Middle School feasibility study, and a change order for numerous revisions to the contractual work at Edward M. Felge Elementary School. And I'm going to ask Sarah Woodhead to take a few minutes to run through quickly what that all means.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. I'll go through each of these briefly. First, item 3.1, Tayac Elementary School Partial Roof Replacement. This is requesting approval for final payment and acceptance. The vendor for the project was Beltsville Industries Group, and they're an MBE in Beltsville, Maryland. The project is completed, occupied, and being utilized for the intended program. All contractual obligations, including the punch list and warranties, have been performed to justify the final payment of $121,703.39 for project closeout. We provided information on the original contract sum, the previously approved change orders, and the current contract value. And the next item, 3.2, is Fairmont Heights High School Replacement Project. This is a request for additional services to perform soil testing on lots 14, 15, and 16, and parcel 47. This testing is required as part of the Phase II environmental site assessment, and it's required prior to starting rough grading for the project. The vendor is Grimmon Parker Architects, and they're a non-MBE in Calverton, Maryland. And we do provide some additional detail. The value of this change order is $106,845. The next item is also Fairmont Heights. This is 3.3, and this is a change in scope for the designers in the amount of $173,110. And this service is for additional design that was required following the acquisition of three new lots added to the area of site development to modify stormwater management and soil and erosion control, jurisdictional requirements, building material product line changes, and extension of construction and administrative services due to modification from an original completion date to the current 2007 completion date for the same firm, Grimmon Parker Architects, non-MBE in Calverton, Maryland. The next item is item 3.4, and this is the feasibility for William Worth Middle School. We request that the board accept the recommendation of the chief executive officer to accept the findings in the feasibility study prepared by Grimmon Parker Architects, specifically the recommendation to replace the entire building, Scheme III, in a future CIP. The content and format of the study, which is also included in the item as an attachment, are as delineated by the rules, regulations, and procedures of the State of Maryland Interagency Committee on School Construction for Feasibility Studies. There was a stakeholder committee that examined three options: major renovation of a majority of the existing school with an addition to accommodate and increase capacity, some demolition and partial reuse of the existing school as a second option, and the third option was complete replacement of the school. And this was worked through in depth over a series of committee meetings, and the study recommendation is that in a future CIP, when William Worth comes up for modernization, that the approach to modernization be replacement rather than renovation addition. And the last item is a change order on Edward Felge Elementary School. That's item 3.5. And this change is in the amount of $454,393 for the construction contract for Segal Construction, and it's for code mandated changes, owner additions, and minor modifications. It includes additional sanitary structures and plumbing revisions as required by WSSC, a direct data connection to Nicholas Orem for improved data performance, and additional work by Verizon and Comcast, as well as some changes directed by the fire marshal during occupancy inspections and various other adjustments. And so those are the five items that we're presenting tonight on the agenda.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. It's very helpful. Colleagues, at this time, I will open the floor up for questions. New colleagues, if you haven't gotten the tutorial on it yet, to your immediate right there is a button, and if you push that button, it lights up on my screen, as Ms. Jacobs has just done, and I'll take questions from you. So we'll start with Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a quick question about the William Worth feasibility study. So, and I know you've been working hard to get to the point where William Worth, you know, I know it's had a lot of issues and you need to get it fixed. My question is, where would it, if you know, where do you think it falls at this point relative to, I guess, the 3DI study that we have? And I know you're looking at revisions of that, too. But where would it fall when we now present the next CIP request to the state next year? Do you anticipate it would be in that framework, or do you think it's going to?
We can't say at this time, and I'll take a second to explain why. Currently, our rank order for modernization or for comprehensive improvement is the 3DI Parsons Study.
Right.
And according to that, William Worth is kind of well up towards the middle of the pack in terms of how it ranks against other middle schools, even though we do recognize that there are significant issues with the facility. We're undertaking a new study that will be more comprehensive, and that study is underway now. It will look at weighting the facility condition index using Parsons 3DI data to reflect critical systems and components and quality of life in the school, basically. But we're also doing an educational adequacy analysis and a utilization study. And those three, when synthesized together, will create a new order for major projects. And until we do that, we really don't know where any one school will fall.
And I think we do anticipate having that work done in time for us to get that reorganized before we come to you with the next CIP.
Okay, yes.
So it's not like a two-year wait or anything.
That's very helpful, because, you know, when you think about it, especially from the community's perspective, when money is put out there for a feasibility study and it comes back and says what they wanted to hear anyway, not that it's not right, but that's what they, you know, the expectation is. You have a feasibility study that says it needs to be replaced or whatever, so it's good to hear that we'll have that comprehensive piece done before the next one.
Yeah, and I also think it's important, though, to note that we had, you know, the number we've been using is a 2.1. That number could go up, it won't go down, a $2.1 billion backlog in facilities, construction, maintenance needs. And so as we consider all these, everybody just needs to understand there is way more need than we have the ability. And so we need to continue to work with our funding partners to get them invested in some of these needs as well. There'll be more on that later. Yes, we will.
That's it. All right, I don't see others, so I'm going to do a follow-up on the William Worth piece that could be, you know, a little tutorial for me, because you talked about the indexes, I forget, 3DI, some 3D, 4D, some study like that. So try to explain for those of us who need a little extra help, the types of indicators that you are currently using to come up with the rankings for CIP, and how these new studies that you're doing now, what other types of indicators could a layman like me kind of understand, other things, other considerations now that a school who's currently in the middle or at the bottom, based on what our current factors are, what are these new factors that this study is looking at?
Okay. So, previous to the current study that's now underway, we were relying exclusively on the 3DI Parsons Study, and those are just the names of the firms that collectively put together the engineering study, and it's.
So 3D doesn't mean some special multi?
Well, you'll need special glasses to read the report, but it doesn't.
So their study measures the deficiencies in the existing buildings and assigns a cost to those deficiencies, and then compares that against the cost of replacing the buildings or square foot per square foot. So that's a useful indicator. If a building has a high number, that means that the cost to fix it is getting closer and closer to the cost to replace the building. And that's certainly something that should sound alarm bells, that we have some serious concerns at a building. And using that metric, as I said, William Worth falls kind of in the middle. But what the study doesn't include, it doesn't say, how does this existing 1960s or 50s middle school compare with a middle school we would build today in terms of the size of the classrooms, or the kind of support space, or organization into grade-level houses as opposed to the junior high model from the 50s or 60s? Our new study will measure that. The Parsons Study doesn't say which systems are maybe more urgent or important, it's just kind of dollar-for-dollar, all dollars are equal. And it'd be like trying to assess somebody's illness by how much it costs to cure them rather than maybe how much it really impacts their quality of life. So we're expanding this so that we're looking at the educational adequacy. And then the third piece that we're bringing in at the same time is the utilization. How crowded is a building? Is it over its capacity? And in the case of William Worth, it has nine relocatable classrooms on site. It's projected to remain over capacity in the out years. So those things will factor in, and they'll synthesize in a different way. But we're going to look at all the other schools according to these criteria as well. So how something's going to move relative to the other buildings, we really want to do the work of the study and see where that falls out.
Okay, this could be pure conjecture. So I understand that now, much better. So is the sense that we will see, based on all these other criteria, that we could see much, a lot of differences in priorities based on this? Or will we just see that they're all just other more reasons why these, all these buildings are in really bad shape?
Well, I think it will tell us more about our need, and it will increase the dollar value of the need, because the old, the previous study, which is still valid, is still just looking at a state of good repair for how it was built in its day with a few modifications to meet code, but not fully up to all the standards and codes. And when we put a price on that, it will be a large number. We did lay groundwork for that in the CIP without knowing which schools in which order we put in, middle school one, middle school two, in going through the six years of the CIP. Same with high schools and elementary schools. But for us to really get off the ground with that kind of approach, we are going to need significantly more funding than we have. So, you know, we're, I think, hoping to elevate the discussion and get people engaged and lay out the parameters, but we won't be able to come up with the answers of how quickly we can do this without the funding partners engaged.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. Just a follow-up on the William Worth question. What is the process for notifying the parents of a school and our staff about next steps? I ask because there's some folks actually walked in from the school that I'm sure will be interested in finding out what the next steps are if this is passed. Second question I had was around MBE. I may have not been listening, but in the past, I didn't hear you refer to which one of the items were MBE contractors or not, so I think that's helpful for us. So I'm curious of the five. I remember, I think the first one, 3.1, I clearly remember you saying MBE. And when you mentioned it, are you referring to the lead contractor was MBE and that there were no subcontractors that were MBE? Or are there some of those where you did have a subcontractor that was MBE as well? And then lastly, a question around the environmental standards and whether, what standards we outline to our contractors around materials and the like, ensuring that any additional renovations and/or new builds are at least on the way to becoming LEED certified? So communication, MBE, and environmental standards.
Can I just interrupt real quick? MBE, which stands for Minority Business.
Enterprise.
Enterprise, right?
Yeah.
Minority Business Enterprise.
Okay.
We were all sitting here trying to, we were quizzing one another to make sure we had it right, so we make sure.
I know Dr. Anderson knew what I was talking about. She's a very strong MBE advocate.
So, okay, starting with communications on William Worth. We had a community meeting at the kickoff of the feasibility study process that was very well-attended. We've had, the school's been well-organized and very responsive. We had a stakeholder committee that we met with over about three months that included parents, students, teachers, some of the people from the area government, local government as well. So it was very well-engaged community process. And then at the conclusion of the study, when the recommendation emerged in support of replacement of the building, we went back out and had another community meeting at the school, an evening meeting with good participation. So I think we kept people pretty well apprised through both of those processes that were coordinated with each other. We also had a website that people could log into and provide comments, and so those were factored into the thinking process as well. So it was pretty good. We've explained to people, I mean, I think it is the tricky part, is that we've done the study, but we don't have the project by name in the plan for replacement. And so we've tried to explain that to people so that it's clear, so that we're not promising something we're not in a position to deliver at this point. And I think it's fairly clear now, but we do hope and expect that they'll stay engaged as we go through next spring, our master planning process, where the master plan will emerge with specific schools in it.
So that being said, the approval and acceptance of the feasibility study, what does that come with? The project is moved to the next step, or?
It doesn't actually move the project, but what it says is that when the project is moved to the next step, we would know to proceed with a replacement of the building rather than a renovation addition.
Okay.
So that's kind of a big conditional that's in there, but that's in there. So that's the communication part. On the MBE part, if we're listing the MBE status on a board action, that's the prime firms, that's the status of the prime firm that's being listed. But many of our projects also have MBE-certified subcontractors as well. Our overall goal is around 35%, 33%, and so sometimes that's done with subcontractors. But we are flagging the MBE status of the prime contractor on these board action summaries.
In the future, can you also flag subcontractors as well? In the future?
The list of subcontractors can be really extensive.
My question, not so much listing them, but whether there was an MBE subcontractor at all.
Okay.
Yeah, sort of a yes or no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so Rupert McCabe, our CIP officer, is pointing out that on this one, in the requisition for payment, you can also see the certified subcontractors. So that is something that on the project closeout, we would routinely provide. I don't, we don't provide this sheet on every change order, which is another board action where we do provide the prime contractor status. But for the closeout, we do provide the MBE status of the subcontractors as well. On the third question, on sustainability, are, we strive to achieve LEED gold on all our new or major modernization projects. And, you know, that's by direction of the board, and we have gotten LEED gold on several of our buildings. So that is a fairly stringent standard. LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, and it's a third-party certification that has very strict requirements for documentation. So you can't just say you're being sustainable without really doing it. And in the end, you get a plaque that you can hang up in the school, but it really does represent a lot of work and collaboration. We do geothermal systems for our mechanical systems. We do a lot with stormwater management. We've put some green roofs on schools. We look for opportunities to be sustainable, but also do that in ways that I think are clear, so the public can see and the students can see the efforts that it takes to have a more sustainable environment and get some learning opportunities out of that investment as well.
Is that a condition that we set, or is that a preference? And if so, how do we sort of demonstrate that to the?
It's actually policy.
Is that in the RFA, Request for Application? I beg your pardon?
Oh, that's Mr. McCabe.
Good evening, board members. So several years ago, the Prior County Exec, and there was a committee that was established to set up a Green Committee. And the Green Committee, once they finalized the committee report based on all agencies in the county, the bottom line was to establish a LEED silver rating for every public building, schools, fire stations, et cetera, et cetera. So that, what came out of that was the green policy for the county. The State of Maryland, on the Public School Construction Program, also, in that period, established legislation that was passed that would fund schools that incorporated sustainability issues or sustainability, design sustainability components. And the IC, the state mandatory, that was set for like two, three years, and they would fund it. So they funded schools across Maryland that incorporated green design. And then we took advantage of that in our initiative from the county as well as the state. So therefore, what Sarah was saying, every new school that we touch, whether it's a major renovation or replacement, or a brand-new school, we incorporate all those attributes for green, and which we continue to do. And in addition to that, in addition to the policy, what we also have adopted with our own academic curriculum is that we have also LEED curriculum that is set up for schools K through 12. They're working on a 6 through 12 grade policy now. So that's part of the whole process. It's not just designing a green school with bells and whistles, but incorporates the educational curriculum. And so it's a whole 360 approach.
Thank you. So that being said, just a follow-up. Many of us, as board members, visit schools that have academies and programs where we're teaching students to do a lot of the work that we're asking some of these contractors to do. The question is, are we also flagging which contractors are using PGCPS students in any way? Is that something we monitor? Some of us have seen homes built by our students, and I would love to be able to see some of our students also be used in some of the work that we're doing on our schools as well.
Any connection with our contractors and our students would have to be through the form of a memorandum of understanding. And so we do list all of our MOUs and the name of the companies that are utilized, and then what their service is to the school system as it relates to student interaction.
But there's no preference given to those groups in our selection process?
No.
Curtis, I just wanted to address what you were just asking, and I've been working with, excuse my voice, woman. I've been working with an organization or a group of people that I've been working with, some of our choice programs, to see about making that happen. So we're working, we're meeting like monthly or every other month to try to work out all of the legal formalities or whatever we have to do to make, to see if we can make that happen. So we are working on that. So I just wanted to let you know that that is in the works.
Thank you. I mean, it would be my brothers to, not necessarily have it a condition, but preference for those contractors who are able, in some form, to recycle some of the work that we're already doing in our system to really train up students to do the work, but also be able to put them to work in our system. It's sort of a grow-your-own strategy, I think, that could really affect it. But the process is already going on, I'd love to be a part of it, but thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
It seems like I'm having a voice problem, too. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Ms. Woodhead and to your staff for all I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Ms. Woodhead and to your staff for all of the wonderful work that you do. I'm not clear on some parts of what's done. In particular, at what point do we determine that a feasibility study is necessary? Also, if a study is performed, or if we do some kind of assessment, is there a list of criteria that's used, and is there a scoring assigned to each school? So, when we look at the list and we say, okay, this school got a forty-seven, I see why it's third on the list. I mean, is there such an objective piece assigned? That part is just not clear to me.
Okay. Well, let me separate the feasibility study question from the ordering question. I'll start with the ordering. Once we've completed the study that's underway right now, the master plan support project, and we have the schools in a queue, the criteria that's used to establish that queue has to be transparent. And we actually are working on a community engagement plan, and we'll start meetings in January and work to get some community engagement around those issues, so that we make sure that it's transparent and clear and straightforward. There are a lot of complicated formulas and rubrics behind it, but at the end of the day, it has to be something that's understandable by community people. So, we're working on that. On the feasibility study, once we have a queue and schools are grouped so that we know whether they're in the near term or the farther-out term, I would expect that we'll take the schools in the near term. And if there's any question about replacement, we would do a feasibility study. And this is driven first by the state. If we want to request funding for the replacement of an existing school, the state will insist on a feasibility study, and they will want to see that the due diligence was done, that the comparison is fair and adequate, that results in the conclusion of replacing over keeping an existing school. And it's- it- I think there used to be, and there probably still are, some organizations that would do it purely by the numbers. If a school costs eighty percent of the cost to replace it, to renovate, they'll say, "Replace it." But the process that we use and that the state requires is a little bit more nuanced than that, in that we're looking for what's the best end result. So, we're looking at lifecycle cost. How much will it cost us in energy for the next forty years? It's not just the project cost, but the long-term cost. What's the educational adequacy of the result? Is it going to really meet the standards for modern educational programs, or are we going to have deficiencies that are going to linger? In either version, it also gives us a chance to look at the cost of phasing a project, which is really important factor in determining the best way to proceed. So, at the end of the day, the recommendation is really the synthesis of all these different factors, and that's why it comes to you in a book instead of just a sheet of numbers, so that all the factors are taken into consideration, and it's a weighed and well-considered recommendation when it comes.
Yeah. So often, you like to have a snapshot, and if, since you've identified most of the criteria, if that- if those areas could be quantified, then it would be fairly clear to us why-
Right.
-the ranking exists the way it does.
Okay.
But I understand. Now, for modernization, the state doesn't require that we have a feasibility study. Do we sometimes have the feasibility study to determine whether modernization makes sense?
We can do that, and I think it's even- it's a best practice, because it does give us a chance, before we start designing earnest, to look at different approaches to solving the problem. And we will have better solutions, I think, if we have the opportunity to consider different approaches. So, once we have schools that are in dire need of work, I think we would do more of these, but they would be more tied to projects that are already listed in the CIP, rather than doing it ahead of being listed in the CIP, as we have in this case.
I'm just so concerned about the amount of money we need to get our schools up to snuff. Are there recommendations that you'd like to make to the board or to the community, or some things that we could do to help the schools get more funding for modernization or even for replacement?
Well, I think, you know, we've had good support from the county, in that the county has funded about a hundred million a year for the last few years. I think there's concern about the county's ability to continue to fund at the level we need, and even that hundred plus another thirty or forty from the state is not really adequate to kick off the modernization program at the level we would like. And the big concern for us is if we spend a lot of money at fewer schools, then we're not attending to very real concerns at other schools. So, we need to have a very robust program in order to do this in a credible, realistic, fair, and equitable way. So, I guess that would be the message, is if we can all pull together and find additional funding, that would be critical to being able to move forward in- with this approach.
Sir, if I might add, just one caveat to that, is that as we plan for next year to finish the master plan project support study, and we quantify that number, parallel to that, I think, as well as, I think in Annapolis, they are well aware of the shortfall of funding, and that's where different bills are being passed. So, I think once we can get that message in front of the legislators to say, here's the big picture, how much we do need, certain bills can be developed and passed, and you would need the support from all stakeholders. So, that's a path we can take, and different from the regular state and county money that we normally get, which Sarah mentioned, a hundred million. So, you can start thinking about that era, that path you can start taking, to go into Annapolis to say, here's the big picture we need, and start lobbying.
Ah, thank you very much. One other question. Regarding the vendors, when we indicate they're MBEs, it hardly gives sufficient information. You know, are we talking about, you know, gender? Are we talking about racial, ethnic? Could we be a little more specific regarding the-
Yes.
-the kind of MBEs we're talking about?
We can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, and then Ms. Williams? Oh, Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I apologize for being late. I just had a couple of questions in regards to the William Wort, and I don't know if you went over it earlier, but I think that the feasibility study was very well put together and gave a lot of information about William Wort and the condition in which it is today. When you mentioned that it's not called out in the budget, and that the reason for it being put, a feasibility being done, was based on major repairs occurring over time, and because the community called for it, is there any other selection criteria when you're looking at replacing school buildings in Prince George's County? Do you have- because this building is- it was built in nineteen sixty-four or something like that, and we have a number of buildings that are older than that in our system. Were there any other criteria that we looked at to bring this one to the forefront for repair?
So, I'm going to interrupt, just because in fairness, that exact question was asked and answered in some depth, so I'm going to ask you to give the very short Reader's Digest version for Ms. Williams, and then we'll-
Okay.
-catch you up with a lot more detail.
Well, we had several significant projects scheduled in the coming years for William Wort, and given that there was a general sense in the community that the building should be replaced and not repaired, we thought it would be prudent to do the due diligence to look at that question specifically, to figure out whether it's better to invest in additional major capital projects at this school, or to defer them to have modernization. If we spend money on major repairs at a school, and then we want to replace it, the state will not pay for the funding that was put into the repair. So, it was prudent, in this case, to do the study. But normally, we would do it as part of an approved modernization project, as the earliest step in projects that are already in the queue for major work.
But when we compare this to the other schools that are in the system, I'm quite sure that there are a number of communities that are calling for repairs or upgrades and renovations, as well as the fact that we have to do major repairs at many of the other schools, is there- I mean, I understand that we do have a number of schools that are older, and everyone wants a new school that looks like wise or flowers, and we cannot provide that today for all of them. My question is, how did this one, other than the fact that, because when you compare it to the other schools in the system, we're doing the same thing, and based on just looking at the Parsons study that was updated in two thousand and twelve, this one was not one of the top ones on the list?
So, are you- I just want to be clear, so you're- because are you asking how they decided to do a feasibility study in the first place? Because we haven't really put it yet, it hasn't changed in order in CIP or anything like that yet.
No, it hasn't changed the order of a CIP, but it moves it along the train of repair quicker than any of the other schools. If you have a school that-
Would you- I would ask that as a question rather than a statement. Does this move- does this do anything to move it faster?
No, no, but I do think, I do think, if I understand where, you know, where you're coming from with the question, I do think that once we get the updated sort of sequence, we shouldn't take these out of order. We should be doing the feasibility studies when they're in the queue for the next, you know, going to the IAC and going to the CIP. We shouldn't be taking these out of order. If you're in next year's queue, that's when you should get a feasibility study, period. And, yes, we've had a few in the last, you know, couple of years that have been out of sequence without being in the CIP where they need to be, and we should, and I hope we will, as a board, as a group, get to that point where, once we get this updated, here's the order we're going to do things in over whatever period of time that is, we're going to stick to that.
Okay. So, because I think that it's- it would be beneficial for us to have it for the other schools that are sort of ahead of them. And like you said, when they come up, they'll get their feasibility study done. From this point forward, from the feasibility study, taking out the fact that we need to put it in the budget and raise funds for this school, what would be the next activities that would happen to make this come to fruition, to make it a real renovation, and we'll see shovels in the ground? What are those activities?
We're in the midst of our master plan support project, which will look at criteria for all the schools, utilization, facility condition index weighted according to criticality, educational adequacy. That will create the new queue that Dr. Maxwell referred to, and then we'll use that queue to put schools into the capital plan in priority order. And so, you'll see it come back to you in the master plan, where we'll begin to lay out what that order is, and then that will move forward into the queue for the capital program. Right now, we have placeholders, and we didn't want to fill in names of schools until we had the study completed. So, that's the order, as far as we're concerned.
And so, that's sort of where my concern comes in, is if there is a school that is higher on the FCI study, and you don't have a feasibility study, then you're not being considered for this master plan. Is that not true?
No, that's not true. The master- I'm sorry, I didn't say that right, but that's- let me clarify. It's- the schools will go into the master plan in priority order regardless of the feasibility study. The feasibility study is a separate study that tells us, once it's Williamsworth, William Wort's turn, what approach should we take? But it doesn't tell us when William Wort's term should be in the queue. That's totally separate from the feasibility study.
Okay. And, okay, I think I understand what you're saying now.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. I just remembered that when we did the first 3DI study, and when it was in process, one of the complaints, if you will, was also that we didn't talk specifically or have them look specifically at the special needs population accommodation, so that while the study is ongoing, that that is really a critical piece, because then you're not sort of- you're going to have the conversation, but you're not sort of each year or every five years saying, you know, where are we going to put the CSET population, where are we going to, based on boundary changes, et cetera? And, you know, and I know constituents in District Five have consistently asked, you know, how are those decisions made relative to, you know, building accommodations and things like that? And that also adds to costs, which is something that, when we're saying to the state we need funding, we can obviously point out, this is our special needs population, and these costs are associated with that, which also goes to why we need to have it done as part of the feasibility, I mean, the second or third 3DI that you're doing now. And then, the other thing that I would- that I wanted to just say again, was to my colleague, Mr. Valentine's, point around green schools. And so, not that it's easier, but it's somewhat easier when you're doing a new building, because you're starting from scratch. But again, in District Five, I worked with the green team for existing schools, and there's so many things at the state level that individual schools can do to try to get that green certification or certificate. And again, I encourage my colleagues in your various districts to, you know, come up with a committee to do that work, because that can help as well at, you know, particularly for those schools who are already, who are not anywhere near replacement or whatever, but could get sort of those certifications to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Ms. Grady?
Mine's was just a really quick question. It's actually along the lines of Ms. Jacobs. You all have explored federal grants that actually could offset some of the costs, especially like when you're talking about William Wort and starting from scratch, related to green, doing a green, you know, green job. How do you explore that?
We do have some partnerships, and there is some use of federal grants, the Qualified Zone Academy Bonds, and there was some stimulus funding that we were able to use at a number of our sites. You know, we also partnered at William Wort, in particular, with the Anacostia Watershed Society, and they gave us data that we were able to use to make sure that we really fully considered some special concerns at the site, and there's the possibility for some partnership that could include some funding. In general, there's limited capital funding from the federal government for school construction. That's just something the federal government has tried to stay away from. It's often been a point of discussion, and it's been in favor and out of favor over the years, but straight bricks and mortar is very limited from the federal government. But we'll look at everything that's available to us, and we do use it when it's available.
All right, colleagues, I see no other questions at this time, and there are no follow-up items. Thank you all administrations so much for bringing these items before us, and we will obviously continue to address these issues in great detail and with great care. And at that, there's no more items on our CIP Fab Committee Meeting, so we are adjourned as folks come in the room. In anticipation for the next meeting, I'd asked for a transition time of five minutes or so. Is that enough? Yes, sir. Okay, so we'll give us five minutes or so to shift focus, and we will restart. Thank you.